This is first one. That makes any one sure. Believe the world we shut, that is okay.
We invite all due listeners joining us and standing with a recitation of Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, how shall it be thy name? Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive our own sinners against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever, amen. It is now seven o'clock. City Council meetings called to order. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You see this, please? Call please Mr. Brown.
Mr. Rob. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Gates, here. Mr. Martin, here. Mr. McGlock, here.
For the record, I received a text from Councilman Rob. Said he is under the weather this evening. He's hoping he won't be recovered enough to make it, but has chosen, I would imagine wisely, to stay at home here this evening.
Move to excuse Mr. Rob.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts to excuse Councilman Rob from the meeting this evening, discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts, yea. Mr. Gates, yea. Mr. Martin, yea. Mr. McGlock, yea.
That motion to excuse passes. I will now entertain a motion to dispense with a reading of the journal from January 3rd, 2023.
To move second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin to dispense with a reading of the journal from January 3rd, 2023. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts, yea. Mr. Gates, yea. Mr. Martin, yea. Mr. McGlock, yea.
That motion passes. And now comes the time for public comment. If anyone has any public comments made to Council this evening, come and put your state, your name and address and make comment, or maybe someone has received public comment through the week. Would like to share that this time. Frank. All right, hearing that on either way. Move forward then to reports from standing special committees. Finance and Personnel Committee met, Councilman Gates.
Mayor, thank you very much. The committee met last Thursday afternoon and began with the combined financial statement. Take a look at that and review it as efficiently as we can. Turning to the back page on income tax collections. You can see here that in, at the end of 2022, city income tax revenues were slightly over $6 million. And then for the month of December, it was $313,000. The finance director mentioned that the collection process helped a lot, including the interest and penalties that taxpayers ended up paying because they hadn't paid. And part of that process, of course, was the efforts of the law director, who prosecuted, didn't prosecute, was available to prosecute because those cases were nullified, but nonetheless, they were filed in municipal court. And so in addition to the penalties and taxes and interest people paid, there were also the court costs that they had to pay as well. So kind of a win-win situation all around. Turning to the second page, and we can see the breakdown down at the bottom of the page. A little over $1 million in individual income taxes, up 21% over the three-year average. Business taxes, of course, we had the outliers there. $1.7 million withholding, $3.4 billion, up 18.5% over the three-year average. Quote that I got from the finance director is, will that trend continue? And that's the, we'll leave it to him to gaze into his crystal ball when he makes his estimations of revenues. We'll use a couple appropriations time. We do know we have those two extraordinary outliers. And we are accommodating those. And we'll mention those in just a minute or two as we look at the front page. Looking at the general fund at the top. At the end of the year, cash of $2.3 million. Encumbrances a little over $400,000, so slightly under $2 million free and clear going into this new year. If you look all the way over to the left, we had about $1.3 million starting in 2022. Big difference for that is the money formerly known as ARPA and also the increased income tax revenue because of the outliers we have. Working our way down. The street fund is free and clear, about $17,000, but there's gasoline tax revenue that comes every month. So the fact that that is low, that's just a one-time low. Again, those monies come from the state every month. If we go down to the 220, the income tax fund, you can see there's a cash balance there as of the end of the year of $225,000. The practice has been for any number of years and any number of finance directors that each month distribute everything from the income tax fund, but leave $50,000 there. The finance director has wisely increased that to $425,000 in anticipation of some significant refunds that we might have to make, quite possibly related to those outliers that we have. We would not want to be into a situation where those monies were distributed to the general fund, capital improvements, police court, et cetera. And then those funds would have to pay them back to the income tax fund so that a refund could be made. That would be, that would be, it would be very awkward. And if we had a situation where, for example, in capital improvements, where we would encumber those funds because we, and we're doing a contract for someone, then in fact, we could have an unbelievable situation where the income tax, or excuse me, the capital improvement fund was actually indebted to the income tax fund. Don't want to go that way. So again, it's very wise to leave that, that large amount. Knowing, of course, that, you know, for, for most people, it's April 15th when taxes are due. It happens to be a Saturday this year, so it would be the 17th. But then you have people who get extensions until October. So, you know, we'll, we'll worry about how long we're going to carry that $425,000 throughout the year. Moving down to the capital improvements fund, line 300. You can see there's an encumbrance there of $430,000. Primarily, that's for two cruisers and a man bands. So that's why we have that huge amount there encumbered. 353 Streets, Alley's and Catch Basins. You can see we have a good, healthy balance there of $427,000 that we can start to plan and do our street resurfacing program. I happened to see an article about a large community to the southeast of us that I believe tonight they are going to authorize their resurfacing program for 2023. So I thought maybe we'd be first in line, but not. But we'll be much further in the line than we have been in previous years. Sewer fund, ending the free and clear, starting the year of $104,000. Water, $216,000 free and clear. And electric and telecommunications, $4.2 million free and clear. Finally, we get down to the hospitalization, $563,000. But Mrs. Cutler mentioned in the report that we had gotten a bill. I believe she said it was like $200,000, so a large payment there. You know, that, that's a fund that is what it is. We have little if no control over that. People get sick and they use their insurance and rightly so. Back to the second page. We can see that in the total budget, revenues exceeded expenditures by $1.2 million. In the general fund, again, revenues exceeded expenditures by a little over $1 million. Going down to 101 revenue, we can see the income tax transfers. We had $25,000 more in income tax revenue into the general fund in 2022 than we did in 2021. So again, will that trend continue? We will see. Next page, again, we have more comparisons. Revenues versus expenditures for the utilities, both in '20 and '21 to look at. For all funds right in the middle, there's a note of the administrative cost. We pared that down, $96,000 in 2022. When we get the appropriations measure, we'll see if that can continue. Next page is the cash investment and reconciliation statement. The 52-week CDs are now at 4%, so that's, that's good news. Looking at the investments under PNC Bank, you can see there's $1.34 billion that will be transferred since PNC no longer has a bank within the city limits of the city. So we'll see. I'm sure the finance department will shop around and find the best place to invest those monies. Total in the city treasury as of the end of 2022, $16,414,28.57. Next page, a short little report on the Sotter Rousch Fund that did better over the course of 2022. I see some of my own statements that came to the House the last week. I wish I could say likewise at Welch Gates Investments. So Mayor, that's the financial report. We looked at, talks about some other things. The finance director reported that he is receiving bank reconciliation statements from the municipal court regarding appropriations. The finance director was starting to reformat his spreadsheets for 2023. He hopes that, he said that Mr. Ensmann's intent to have the budgets, excuse me, I should say, the requested appropriations from streets and utilities onto him by February 1st. And we discussed briefly about having a committee to all meet twice to go over the appropriations. It seemed to work better to do that two half-days as opposed to one full day, where it just gets to be, at least for this member of council, too many numbers in too short a time. Regarding personnel matters, we had two retirements. Chris Corvus retired from the service department on January 8th. Ed Fedser from the police department on January 9th. I'm sure that everyone wishes those gentlemen a long and satisfying retirement. As we know, we had three hires in the fire department. On the first, the second, and the third, there was a public swearing-in for those gentlemen. Regarding personnel matters of the police department, Mayor advised that background investigations have been reviewed and that on the 23rd and the 24th, there will be multiple interviews with potential candidates. So Mayor, that is my report. If the finance director has anything he wants to add, by all means, he certainly should.
Just a couple things appropriations I did. A lot done on it this weekend. I pretty much had it all formatted now and a lot of last year's numbers dropped in. So I would be contacting the other department heads here shortly to get some expenses on that. So I expect early February, I'll have a draft for everybody. And the court does have working bank recs to me through the end of December.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
That's all I answered.
If I may add, on the personnel side, we were able to bring one of the candidates for police officer position in this morning. Chief Paul Dine interviewed him, very impressed. So we extended to him a conditional offer of employment, signing, counter-signing. So that, that is in process. So that was moved up prior to the other ones that were followed.
Mayor, that concludes my report. And Mayor, I move that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated December 31st, 2022, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin that the combined financial statements and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated December 31st, 2022, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts, yea. Mr. Gates, yea. Mr. Martin, yea. Mr. McGlock, yea.
That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gates, for that report.
You're very welcome.
We move on to Utilities and Streets Committee, Councilman Martin.
Yes, Utilities and Streets Committee met January 12th at 3:30. The first item of business, there is a Columbia Gas pipeline replacement project going on on North Campbell Street between West Miley and Marvin. And Marvin Avenue from North Campbell to just west of Sharon Street. The tentative start date for that was, was this week. And so joining us virtually was Ben Coulter, who is the Columbia Gas Public Affairs Manager, to discuss the project. Essentially, the initial plans for the project would, trying to boil it down here, would cause them to need to, when they bore under a road or near other lines, they actually have to visually inspect those. Well, that results in quite a few potholes. And as has it, we basically just repaved Marvin Avenue. So they were cognizant of that. And so what they are going to do is put a new main essentially to the north of Marvin Avenue. They're going to leave Live One to the south of Marvin Avenue and then abandon another one behind the Marvin Avenue houses. Eventually, as the line south of Marvin Avenue degradates, eventually they're going to have to do something there. However, they're cognizant of the fact they don't want to put potholes in new roads. So they're hoping we can get a few years down the road before we'll actually have to go that round. So we were appreciative of their concern and they're willing to work with us on that. And if anyone else has any questions in the power pump presentation, or shared is the maps and such like that. Of course, Mr. Ensmann can answer those questions or get answers from Columbia Gas on that as well. The residents were made notified shortly after our meeting. Email and I believe physical letters were sent. And we are very pleased, are, and we're very, very pleased with their restoration efforts in the other areas that they've worked in so far in the city. We briefly discussed utility department budgets. Now, utility department appropriations for the fiscal year 2023 are being populated with different departments, utility office, electric department, service department, Division of Streets, Division of Water Distribution, Division of Sewer Maintenance, water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. There's multiple steps to populate these. The first step is initiated from Mr. Ensmann's office. The next step is the department superintendent reviews, provides finer details. The department superintendents and utilities director review the budget appropriations together before submitting to the finance director. Step four, submit, they submit the requested amounts to the finance director for reviews and adjustments. The finance director, step five, reviews those directly with the utilities director. And then, of course, step six is our appropriations meeting. So there's a lot of work that goes into these. And so we just wanted to highlight that. But the overarching thing is that utilities appropriations are on schedule to be presented to the finance director before the end of the month. So kudos to all involved in that lengthy, tedious, yet very important process. Water treatment plant line study update. The next step for us as a city is to disclose the proposed operational change to the treatment process with the Ohio EPA, Division of Drinking and Groundwater. The EPA annual site visit is scheduled for Thursday, January 26th. And they are planning, we're planning to disclose that operational change at that time. We know the EPA takes a lot of time to think these things through, so we're going to give them a heads up on that. Another update, the average that we spent on lime disposal and also CO2 as related to lime has averaged the last three years of $100,812. Last year's expenditures topped $108,000. Those are measures presented to us on that. I'm sure more to come. All right. The effects of extreme cold temperatures. A lot of us saw the peak power alert go out shortly before Christmas as a result of extreme cold temperatures. And so we're going to go through exactly how extreme this was for our area. The lime froze in the pipes and troughs that supply the lime slurry to the clarifier. Plant managers fought through the adverse conditions to remedy that issue. Our turbidity levels were elevated. Operators did a fantastic job of keeping the level below the violation threshold. Both water tower level indicators froze, so operators were able to maintain proper levels and remedy the situation with heating and insulation. There were nine water main breaks throughout the city. Crews were out repairing line breaks through the holiday weekend. Service department crews did an outstanding job making repairs in extremely cold conditions. Water plant was able to keep up with the additional water demand from the leaks. Utilities office received numerous calls on frozen and busted water service lines. Crews were dispatched to close the water supply to home businesses until the lines were able to be repaired. We did issue a peak power alert. It is an unprecedented electric demand that was setting records across the AEP territory. Typically, summer is when electric peaks are set. We have had a few peak power alerts during the winter time, but it always turned out summer set the basis. Because usually those came in January, February. So summer caused the basis. This, though, was at the end of the year. So as you can imagine, they more than likely, the transmission peak was set for the 2024 billing year during this time. It's a one-hour period during one year. The peak demand of 22,860 megawatts within the AP territory was set on December 23rd between the hours of 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. The load forecasting algorithms were predicting the electric demand to peak between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m. Fortunately for us, we were able to get our generators online earlier than the peak power alert. And so while comparatively speaking, our demand was higher than we normally see during a peak power event, it wasn't significantly. So it was around one megawatt's difference around there. We're still waiting on some final numbers, but I think we were around 14, Mr. Ensmann, is what you said. And we'd like to see that number between 11 to 13 for peak power events, saving us the maximum amount of money. However, it wasn't, it wasn't extreme. It's not like it was 18, 19, something like that, which it very well could have been. Another effect of the cold fire temperatures is the cost of hourly power on the open power market during this time was $1,500 to $2,200 per megawatt. Put that perspective, we're averaging through all of our contracts situations between $70 and $80 per megawatt. So that was extreme. So if you had to go on the open market during that time and purchase, it was really expensive to do so. Now, the reason is that there was a lack of generation compared to demand across the electric territory and PJAM. PJAM, and to remind everyone, that territory isn't just Ohio or our area. It's Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey, Maryland, parts of Michigan, Indiana, Tennessee, Delaware, North Carolina, Virginia, and the District of Columbia. So the PJAM area is a wide. And of course, we have extreme cold temperatures across the whole swath of that region. There was also some issues. A lot of areas who do diesel generation weren't able to start their generators because of the cold. So they had to rely on some open market and some other stuff. Fortunately, we were able to start our generators. And because of that, we were actually able to sell at those high rates on the energy market. In fact, during those three, between December 23rd and 25th, we were able to gross $55,673 in sales in the energy market. They actually requested, because our generators were going, they actually requested us to have longer operating times to sell more. We could have potentially done that for more sales. However, we chose not to because our diesel fuel levels were low. We were around 900 gallons in storage. It was enough to top off our diesel day tanks, but fuel deliveries were not an option. And so we made the decision to keep generation units available to Shelby in case there was a grid emergency. Because obviously, that's also backup for us. So I think the utilities department made a very wise decision there to make sure that in case of, because at the time, if everyone remembers, there were rolling blackouts happening in other markets even right around us. Ohio Edison being one of those. So for us to be able to do that was important. So reiterate a couple things. Peak power alerts do not determine rates. Obviously, the rates are set by the city of Shelby. What they do determine, though, is the transmission cost to bring that to us. All right? That is set by PJAM according to this model of peak demand. It happens for one hour during one year. That sets the rates for transmission. So there's a lot of confusion about that. A lot of misinformation about that. But the bottom line is the energy has to get to us. Now, we've done things in the city, putting our solar power behind the meter, having our generators, potentially doing battery storage in the future. That's why all these things are important and work in concert together. Obviously, we would have benefited from a, we benefit more from a summer peak power alert because our solar power is able to help us with our array during the times of typical usage. Well, that doesn't do very well with the sun sets at, you know, 4:30 p.m. And during the winter time, your peak power tends to be during the colder night hours, right? During those times. So we were able to avail ourselves of the solar power at this peak power alert. But if we do decide as a city to go for batteries, that'll be another, a storage. That will be another benefit during the winter peak power times that happens in the future. So things to look forward to. But again, to reiterate, it's the transmission costs. And we've saved hundreds upon hundreds of thousands of dollars to the city. How, at this point, millions of dollars to the city because of the way that we've thought about lowering transmission costs and because of the sacrifices our citizens have made during peak power alerts. So it's important to reiterate that it does make a difference on the overall bill you pay, but not necessarily the rate. Get off my soapbox there. But, you know, kudos to Mr. Insman, too, that we weren't in a situation where we ever would have to be on the open power market paying fifteen hundred to twenty-two hundred dollars per hour. You talk about some systems absolutely being wrecked by that, and we were in a good position. All right. Last bit, the Consumer Price Index Adjustment. The CPI was released the day of the meeting. The adjustment was five point seven percent. Obviously, per ordinance twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two, the water and sewer CPI percentage adjustments have an upward adjustment of no more than five percent. Any additional authorized percentage has to be presented to council no later than the second regular meeting in February of the adjustment year. So there was a question put forward to the committee of whether we wanted to put that in the docket. But I pointed out that in my interpretation, the rules specifically state that it shall be presented to council, not if the committee deems it. So we will see legislation at the February sixth meeting to vote up or down as council on that additional point seven upward adjustment. So that would be the legislation that's prepared, so when you see that, that's why the legislation is coming, because it is essentially dictated per ordinance twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. Of course, what council decides to do without legislation, council's prerogative, first meeting in February.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Martin in regard to his report? Here we go, we'll move forward to the Safety Committee, Councilman Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Safety committee met on January fourth. Fire news, we learned that there will be a county EMA meeting on January twentieth, and the new director will be in attendance, so there are a lot of people to have already, there's definitely a new director. It's been so early, it's been firefighters who were hired and they all started beginning every month. New ambulance could be in early as March, but as late as May. That, of course, is always, you know, it's never something done, so we should cross our fingers that we get it earlier than that. Still waiting on ladder truck to get back, and I did talk to Mr. Thompson since then. I assume that it's not yet, so I would cross your fingers to get that thing back here, because we don't want to be without it, what I mean. Chief Thompson is still exploring, they are just actually starting to explore ideas that would expand the fire station in order to house the new personnel and equipment that they use. And this year, we will negotiate with Jackson Township to go fire protection contracts. In health news, all the food inspections were caught up. They got behind during COVID, and they should do a really good job of everything to call back up now. And so going forward, we'll be in shape. And we're working with, for the new CDO grant right now, so that relationship should be coming up any time. And your annual report for the Health Department will be in soon. COVID cases, except for fifty-three, which is down from fifty-one in November. Community cases of two, diarrhea zero in Shelby. Measles outbreak has grown to over one hundred cases in Fairmont County. Remember, this was all the fourth of January, so that could be probably more by now. The police news, they were still short in dispatcher. And again, as Mr. Gates said earlier, Ed Fetter was to retire on January ninth, and we do thank him for his service. And with his retirement, we will be down five officers.
Mr. Roberts? Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Roberts in regard to his report? Here we go, we'll go to reports from the city officials. My report, since our last meeting, I've been attending to the various undertakings connected with the Office of the Mayor. On the third of January, I helped coordinate our Board of Health Team Meeting on the fourth. Participated in Project's team meeting. That is where a lot of the ideas come for initiatives for a brand-new year and ongoing through the year. Then on the ninth, I attended a community improvement corporation meeting, heard Monday morning. On the eleventh, met with participants of the Bridgeton County Regional Planning Commission Executive Committee. And on the twelfth, I participated in a radiological tabletop exercise put on by the Bridgeton Public Health in Mansfield. And then on the twelfth, was part of a Zoom meeting as a member of the Community Action Commission Board of Trustees. And as I mentioned earlier today, we had a joint interview with this very promising police officer candidate. So that is my three report. Are there any comments or questions about my report? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, you talked the last meeting about the public records policy acknowledgement, the non-compliance finding in the audit, and wondered how that resolution is coming.
Glad to ask, I'm a reader. So when the policy auditor's non-compliance finding in regard to the public records policy acknowledgement, the administration presented a revised public policy to the Records Commission. That revised policy was reviewed and ratified on December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And that was done, of course, by the Records Commission. Subsequently, copies of the public records policy along with acknowledgement receipts of receipts were disseminated to the record custodians and managers of the city. And so to my knowledge, we now have signed acknowledgement documents from all of our record custodians and managers, and that was done before December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. I think we should be good for the next audit. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, we do have a public records policy that's enacted in ordinance. This, what you call a policy coming from the Records Commission, is that, that can't deviate from the ordinance candidate?
There were some tweaks ever made, now I will investigate that, but not scum, but just, I'd imagine a change of, of course, any change is a change. Maybe a dozen, two dozen words. You recall, Mr., I can't tell you offhand, but there's some updated language written in by Mr. Baker.
Okay. Of course, it's council that sets policy. The administration sets procedures. So, you know, if those are procedures that operate, you know, under the umbrella of the ordinance, then there's not a problem.
We'll check it out, I'll report next meeting.
Wonderful, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? If not, we'll move forward to Mr. Crone, Finance Director.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilman Gates, for the finance report, which covered most of my topics. We've had a, there's a good number of year-end reports that have to be sent out to various agencies, and I've been working through those, and as I said, working appropriations, that's coming along nicely. We are short a staff member in the income tax front this week due to illness, so it's unfortunate, but rather this week than the first week in April. So we're coming through that. Then, as I said, the report, working through bank reconciliations with the court to get that straightened up as well. I think that's all I have to report, sir.
Mr. Crone? Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crone in regard to his report? I'll move forward then to Ed Fetter, Director of Law.
Thank you, Mayor, I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Gates, Project Coordinator?
Thank you, Mayor. We're continuing to work on doing our projects for any after appropriations, but we didn't know that money's there for the payments. Our engineers are working on the curb ramps, so it takes up a lot of time to get those plans ready to go, so hopefully we'll get that done. We've got a meeting tomorrow, we'll see where things are at with that. Also, last week, the company that hosts our website had some server equipment problem. So it was down for a little bit, but they got it back up. However, some of the forms, reports, and so forth were not put back on, so they were working to get those back on. But there's some that we had to get back on right away, so I put those back on, including tax forms, so it's kind of important right now. So if you find something that you need or missing on there, let me know, and we'll make sure it's on there. I know the financials are back to August anyway, so we've got to get those coming back up, so that's all I have to report.
Mr. Gates? Any comments or questions for Mr. Gates in regard to his report? Mr. Gates?
Since the engineers are working on curb ramps, that tells me that the streets have been chosen for those. I, whether Mr. Gates wants to tease us tonight, or whether he wants to tell us what those streets are going to be?
Oh, good. Then John might, Sharon, Jennings Court, Auburn, Taff Street. Man, we're still toeing up our figures, so I would, you know, we're not fucking making it all the easier, so.
Main Street. The Main Street, obviously, to get that.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Well, I think we're ready for new business that we brought to our council. Is there any new business this evening? Unfinished business, as I said, Mr. Martin. Hopefully, in the end of this quarter, we'll have some decisions on the future use of the Main Street Fire Station. I did have a conversation with the Historical Preservation Commission that is under their purview, and so they sort of might be a part of this discussion on certainly inviting their input. So that's what we'll give, that'll be probably at their next meeting. All right? Any other unfinished business? Legislation?
Ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-three, amending sections two hundred fifty-eight point zero one, salaries of members of council, two hundred fifty-eight point zero two, salary of the mayor, two hundred fifty-eight point zero three, salary of the Director of Law, and two hundred fifty-eight point zero four, salary of the Director of Finance and Public Record of Chapter two hundred fifty-eight, elected official salaries, codified ordinances of the City of Shelby.
Move for second reading?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the second reading of ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion, Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I move to amend by substitution. The substitute ordinance was included in the package.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin to amend by substitution, and the substitute ordinance is bound to the package. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, Mr. Martin gets the eagle I warned from the last meeting where he noted that the salaries for calendar year two thousand twenty-three needed to be included in the ordinance. Otherwise, when the first ordinance went into effect, those salaries would disappear. So I went through and in each of the four sections, put in the salaries for calendar year two thousand twenty-three. So that's the, we are five steps in each of the sections instead of the previous four.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlott?
Yay.
Substitute ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-three passes. I'm sorry, it has been amended by that substitute ordinance, yes.
That's correct.
See, amendment by substitution passed. Amendment by substitution passed, yes.
Quite right, we need the second reading to be voted upon.
So now we have amended, and now we are ready for the second reading as amended by the substitute ordinance. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlott?
Okay.
That second reading of substitute ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-three passes.
Ordinance number three, two thousand twenty-three, enacting section two hundred four point zero six, Mayor James E. Henkel Conference Room of Chapter two hundred four, Official Standards of Codified Ordances of the City of Shelby.
Move for first reading? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the first reading of ordinance number three, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I don't know how it happened to be, but I realized that the city has done nothing to honor the memory of Mayor Henkel, who, of course, died in office. And thinking what might be appropriate, this is the ordinance that has come forth to name what is generally called the front conference room, more formally to name it the Mayor James E. Henkel Conference Room.
Very nice. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlott?
Yay.
Ordinance number three, two thousand twenty-three passes.
Ordinance number four, two thousand twenty-three, enacting section two hundred thirty point zero eight, Wedding Piece of Chapter two hundred three, Mayor of the Codified Ordances of the City of Shelby.
Move for first reading?
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the first reading of ordinance number four, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, first of all, I'll begin by saying that whether a mayor performs weddings or not is solely a discretion of the mayor. That power is a magisterial power, not a ministerial power. A magisterial power is one in which the person involved gets to use discretion. Ministerial duties are ones that one has no choice but to do. And you, of course, as I mentioned, have chosen not to do weddings. This ordinance comes about, I'll say sadly, because of what had happened and is happening in the, in another city in Ohio, I won't go into details, where the mayor was accused and went to trial. And one of the accusations for which he was found guilty was that he had pocketed over ninety-two hundred dollars' worth of fees, gratuities, if you will, given for weddings. As I recall reading a story, one of the defenses, the defense was offered as he didn't know that he had to do that. I find that somewhat questionable. Speaking from my own experience, I knew that when someone gave me a gratuity for performing a wedding, that those monies were received under color of office and therefore had to be deposited, so. But there is, there's some ambiguities that exist. There is Attorney General's opinion from the nineteen eighties, nineteen eighty-three, that it doesn't quite apply to Shelby, it applies to non-chartered communities. It says that the monies have to be deposited in the city treasury, but later on, the mayor can claim those as his own. Well, mayors receive salaries, and I dare say the salary that our mayor receives is adequate, that he doesn't have to rely upon the gratuities of weddings if he chose to do so. So the other ambiguity or the other uncertainty is that the Ohio Ethics Commission is very clear that no public employee can accept any gratuity period end of report. So what this ordinance would do is to make it very clear, it addresses those uncertainties, those ambiguities, and resolves them. Mayor, I want to thank you, I had promised this off you, and you pronounced it good, so to speak. And so it now comes to council for an affidavit.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlott?
Yay.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocken?
Yay.
Ordinance number four, 2023, passes this first reading. Now come to miscellaneous business. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I move the council going to an executive session with the Director of Law concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin during the executive session for the reason so red. Discussion, Mr. Gates.
Mayor, should this motion pass, and I would ask that you accompany, you and the police chief accompany the council, the law director into executive session.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocken?
Yay.
Council goes into executive session at 7:50.